Change in a police or a fire chief. I want to introduce Doug Armstrong over here to my left here. And then our architect from partners and architect David Hassan. David's been with us for the last eight years, helping us on many things, most recently on implementing our new city offices at thirty-five fifteen Broad Street. Both of them are available to answer questions tonight as well. And we encourage you to ask their question. So I'm going to open the meeting. Well, you know what? I'm sorry. To my left, our our team staff here, this is just want to start.
Sure. So I'm Justin Brighter, I'm the city manager and city clerk.
And I'm Reece Sherry, I'm the treasurer and finance director.
And I'm Josh James, I'm the assistant to the city manager.
Thank you all. So let's start with not arrange participation. Is there anybody that's in the audience who'd like to say anything to start the meeting before we jump in?
Will you have questions later?
Absolutely, I've got your questions, yeah, okay, I just. We will jump right in then. Does everybody have this handout? If you don't, please look at the back. The goal, the goal is to help you easier with information. So I want to start by just stating that on August eighth, and I'm looking at the upper left corner of the first page. On August eighth, this council voted to place a public safety facility proposal on the November eighth ballot, November eighth, twenty twenty-two. And that request to the voters is for approximately two mils, which would equate to roughly eight point four million dollars. The purpose of the village is to construct and or renovate public safety facilities that would meet our current fire operational standards in building those to serve our firefighters and sheriff departments. As I mentioned, we've been working on this topic for a number of years. We have not yet asked the voters to support a village related to this topic. So with that, we've talked a lot as a council before this. And this council felt very strongly that we need to find out what the citizens will support in terms of dollars, because we have a couple of options that we feel could meet the needs of our fire station going into the future. So we put a ballot question in front of you, and it's on the ballot, and I want to just read it, then we can dissect it a little, talk about it if we need to. So the ballot question reads like this. Charlotte City of Dexter County of Washington, Michigan, borrow the principal song not to exceed eight million four hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars. Eight hundred ninety dollars. And issue is general obligation unlimited tax bonds payable over a period not to exceed twenty years from the date of issuance for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring, designing, renovating and or constructing public safety facilities in the city. Which facilities may be used by the DAFD and the Washington County Sheriff's Office, including site acquisition, design, related site improvements, and furnishing and equipment in the facilities, including all appearances and attachments there too. That's the question. The estimated mileage to be levied in twenty twenty-three is two mils, which is two dollars per thousand dollars of taxable value. And the estimated simple average annual mileage rate required to retire the bonds is is two mils. Again, two dollars per thousand dollars of tax return. Council recently voted to take some of our surplus for the last couple of fiscal years and specifically allocate that to a restricted fund, cash fund towards the fire station. We put just under a million dollars in a restricted nine hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars in a restricted fund. We did that because we want the citizens to understand that we've been trying to save for this too. And we felt it was important that everyone knows that. After, after. Let me stop. Does anybody have questions related to the ballot language? Yes?
I think this wasn't done five years ago, I mean, what's been the whole time?
Well, so you can do just about anything with four votes, as long as it's legal. But we haven't had a question phrase before this council over the last five years that has drawn four votes. We did, we did, we did back in twenty twenty vote momentarily to put a similar question on the ballot, but when COVID hit, we quickly removed it. We took back the question because we were really unsure what that pandemic was going to do as a result of. I know we knew what it was going to do back at that time, and we didn't. So we, we, we actually took that step as a council in two twenty twenty and then went through it and then we had, we've had turnover of council members. And we've, we've taken the time to work together to explore the issues, to understand the data. And I think we've, we've got a couple of really good options that I'll, I'll let our architect go over and our fire chief talk about.
And then when did they put the million dollars aside?
We just did, we just did that a meeting ago or so. But we've had it, we've had it in cash reserves unrestricted, and we just decided to physically restrict it for that purpose. Yes, sir?
The ballot language is kind of either or option, either renovation or reconstruction. Why, and I realize that quite the same. Are the council not going back for the specific recommendation for either one of those plans in the year?
Well, I think I can, first of all, I can speak for why I felt it's important to carry two options forward, and then I'll let my fellow council members provide some additional information if they want to share a different opinion or concur or whatever. You know, I think, I think that I think that as I, as I listen to residents, people have not said to me, we want the fire station here, or we want the fire station there. What they've said is, we want a facility that will be more modern than the one you have, and one that will serve our I think going into this with two options is actually a strength. Because we haven't, we haven't fully vetted them all. I mean, at this point in time, we've created, we've created a, we've taken a, a look at what we have today, what we know we want to improve for tomorrow. Okay, thinking, thinking into the future. And we've, we've had the architects draw what that might look like in terms of a picture, a space picture, so that we know that the space needs are, are able to be met. The two options have different advantages, and they also have different, I suppose, kinds. But the, the, you know, for like, here's a topic we haven't talked about, for example, thoroughly enough, I think. We know that we can achieve the same amount of space, actually more space, for the same dollars by renovating the current station. We can actually have more space at that location. But we haven't fully analyzed and understood what the impact of the fire service might be while we actually do that project. It's been suggested by the architect that they could renovate the lower level, and we could put people downstairs, then do the upstairs, that kind of thing. But a lot of this has come together in the last, you know, three, four months. And I think some of these issues need to be looked at a little further. But the fact remains, until we know what the residents are willing to support, a dollar amount, if, 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 if this doesn't pass, neither one of these options will be what we're able to achieve.
According to this flyer that went out, the cost or maximum is not to exceed, because the same figure, nine point four, or both. So when you say cost, cost sounds to me like the cost is the same if that's accurate.
Yeah, the cost.
Is that true or not?
The cost estimates for, for, for both options have been estimated by partners and architecture to be the same. There's a little more square footage for the renovation option.
So if it's the same, and you spend four, nine point four, or not to exceed nine point four, what thought has been given to utilization, assuming it moves out of town, of the present structure in town? Senior center? Community center, tear it down, rebuild it, what?
All of those options have been mentioned at one time. We do not have a clear decision on that.
I think the gentleman behind me verbalized something I've heard quite often. And that is, give us something very specific, factual, this is where we're going to go, what's going to cost, this is what we're going to do with the existing facility if we go elsewhere. And it's sort of like the public is being asked, allocate, approve the money, allocate the money, and we'll figure out what's going to happen later. Is that true?
Yeah, the decision on the location would be after the ballot. You know, after the vote on the question, yes.
What thought has been given to utilization of a present structure if the station goes to the other location?
All right, so let me start in with a couple of variables. So if we were to completely abandon eighty-one forty, we would be taking both fire and sheriff and moving on with it. The, the cost of the sheriff, David, this is where I might ask you to rely on you for validating my numbers here. But the, if we don't move the sheriff out of eighty-one forty, potentially, we could renovate that into larger space for them there. That's one council use. Not having a bid, remember, not, all of these are estimated costs. So until we actually have a, a full design and an actual hard bid number, we don't know what we can actually build for the eight point four, even with the inflation we're in. So I'm trying to answer your question. It might be that we only move fire if we were to, if we were, if we were to move them at all, and then police would stay.
That is a concept that we've explored in our scenarios.
If, if the bids were to come, what we would probably do is, is design, like, let's say the decision was made to go to the MAF property, the former MAF property out on next round of the road. If we decided to go to there, go there, we would bid the project, I would think, for fire and police to go there. And then pending the bid evaluation, see what we can afford for the eight point four million.
Okay, not that I implore kind, but if it's the Washington County Sheriff's Department, why isn't Washington County responsible for facilities for their employees and cost?
Justin, you can help me with this, but our, our agreement with the sheriff's office for years has been that we provide them any space in the cities so they can operate their local deputies.
So does that agreement continue if you move to Timbuktu or someplace else, or is it just for the present facility? Or is it perpetuity?
Well, the, the, the specific facility is not mentioned in the agreement. It says that we'll provide them a space. I, I think that it's, I think that it's a very good thing to have, to offer them space in town. I think the presence is important. And historically, as long as I've been here, they've been eighty-four, twenty years or whatever, it's been twenty-one years. They've always been eighty-four. I know that there were in other locations. You know, the hotel, it was originally shared. There were another place in the town before they landed there.
But the Dexter taxpayer is paying the cost of providing that facility for them.
I suppose so, yes, yep.
Yeah, but it hasn't been communicated to the citizens. Because before I walked in here, I'm just assuming, I'm going to vote yes or no, and that chunk of money is definitely going to bill fire and sheriff. That was my assumption from everything I've read. Now, you're bringing forth all pieces of possibilities that seems more vague.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it seems that way, you know, we don't, we don't have a, we don't have a hard bid. You know, the, the, the ability of the community, of community, of community, we don't, we don't do a shortage. Our, our.
Well, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, I don't know that other people understand. Okay. If you get eight point four million dollars and it passes, we may or may not move the sheriff and the fire department in there. You're bringing up other variables. And that should be communicated to the citizens. I mean, the whole thing, from what you're saying right now, it sounds like there's a lot of possibilities.
There are, and I think that's a strength to it. I think that's a strength as we go into an environment where inflation is there and material shortages. We're going to have to, we're going to have to make a decision at some point in time. And we think, we think we can serve the community in either location. I think that's fair, right? Otherwise, we wouldn't have two options out there. We can do that.
But you're bringing forth more than two options, is what I'm saying. I mean, I walked in here, I assumed, okay, if this thing passes, they're going to build it where the sign is on that piece of land, and it's going to be sheriff, it's going to be fire. That was my assumption, walking in here from everything I've read. Now you're saying other things. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm saying that nothing is written in stone until it's ultimately, you know, goes that way.
Yeah, and look how many people were at this meeting tonight. So I bet there are a lot of people who were thinking like, I'm thinking, you know, like, not realizing there's all these other variables and possibilities.
Well, truthfully, it's been hard to get a lot of feedback. I mean, we, we've, we've had, we've had these meetings, these workshops regularly for many years, and there's very little, very, there's been very little public input. I mean, David, you've been at many of them, Justin, you've been at a lot of them. And at, at that, I'm not, that's not criticizing the residents.
Right.
I mean, we all, we all have a lot to do, and you're relying on us to come forward with the best options that we can. And I'm out of your hand now, I'll call you in a second.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's communication, that's my point.
Yep, fair, fair comment.
That's it, it's not pointing the finger at anybody or any player.
No, understood. Jamie, please.
Yep. So when the time came to approve the ballot language, I was prepared to tie the ballot language to a specific location. I am personally in favor of building new, that would be both fighter and sheriff. It did not seem like there was support. I mean, I think we even took a vote on that. There wasn't support on the rest of council to tie it to a specific location, for whatever reason. I was prepared to make that decision. I think, I'm not going to speak for anybody else. I think there was at least one other person on council, and maybe one person who wasn't there who has a preference for the Meadowview location. I agree that it's difficult to contemplate supporting this without knowing what the specifics are. Because I can imagine there are members of the public who are okay spending this dollar amount in one location, but they wouldn't be okay spending it in a different location, because maybe they do have a location preference. I also think, I mean, in terms of my opinion of location, I do see a lot of potential at eighty-one forty, the current site, for other uses. At the council, we have not explored those in detail. We've mentioned them, you know, people on council have mentioned, oh, that could be a great location for the indoor farmer's market, move it inside there when winter comes. Could you have some sort of public meeting space? Things like that. We have not, to my knowledge, explored those in depth. But I do see if we, if we do move the, the fire and sheriff away, I see other uses there that might better serve the public in that location, might be a better use of what's physically there in that space. I feel like putting the, a new or renovated station at the location, to me, feels like square pay ground hole. We weren't able to commit to a location before this ballot language. The other thing I have heard from residents regarding the specificity of this or lack thereof is they do feel that people are looking to us to come up with a specific plan. That's what we're likely to do on this body. And so it's disappointing to me too that we weren't able to do that in time for this ballot. At the same time, I do think at some point you do need to go to the public with whatever the majority of council is comfortable going to the public about. And this is what this particular council is comfortable going to the public with. And so then it does become an opportunity for you to provide that feedback.
I have two questions. First, both of these projects are nine point four million, and you're only asking for eight point four. Where does that other million come from, from this fund you were talking about?
That's the million in cash, really, yeah. Yeah, and, 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 you know, every project when you, when you go forward needs to have a contingency in mind. So that the nine point four includes the contingency, so we've made up the contingency with our cash reserve.
And then my other question is, let's see in a moment, what was my other question? Oh, if, if it passes, then it seems like you're in limbo, because how long or what is the procedure for deciding here or there?
Well, personally, I think all we would do then is have another public meeting and get input on, on things.
So you could decide this without having the public vote on it again?
Yes, we, the council could decide the location without having a second public vote. But I would advise that we would have another public meeting at least and get feedback on neighbors, who favors what, what?
Yeah, just briefly. It's hard to design something if you don't really know how much money you've got. And so what you have here is what could happen. But it isn't necessarily what David would give us if we said, okay, here's what we got, and we wanted to do the final plan, and we could expose the public to a final plan. But it's pretty tough to, to go forward if you don't know what you've got. So that's why.
Sunam, and then I'll take the question from Doug.
Thank you. One of the things we also did in spring, summer was to send the survey out to our residents. And one of the questions on the survey was the location of the fire station. And it would have been much easier for all of us on council and residents if the survey coming out had such a clear, you know, two thirds majority of this or that. But with that survey, at least for me, when I read the results, it was very evident that there were people on either side. So for me, it said that more conversation with the public is needed. You know, some of us might, in our own families or our circles, think about this option or that option and talk more about it. But the, the survey going out with the seven hundred results around that, if I'm mistaken, coming back, showed that there are multiple conversations going with a lot of strength. So at least for me, that gave that we should spend more time in discussing the location than just tying it also to the money. The other thing I would like to mention is that on that meeting of August seventh, we came together to actually have a ballot language. That was a very strong meeting. It was a very good meeting. There was a lot being discussed. So I encourage you to go back and, and see the conversations, because it's really easy to say, oh, this person wanted this side, or this person wanted that, or some people wanted to cut the language of the location, and some people don't. But there was a lot of back and forth discussion for us to be able to come to a language to put on the ballot. And as mentioned, knowing how much we have to work with is really, to me, at least, was the first step to then be able to go and say, okay, let's look at our options and present it to people.
Question to Sunam. Would you give us approximately the breakdown of the survey? What percentage favored here or there? Was it sixty, forty, or seventy, thirty, or what? Anybody that can guess that number?
So that's what I wanted to clarify. At least as far as I can tell, we did not have a question that specifically asked people to choose between those. What I see is that perhaps you're referring to question thirty-five, which we, do you have any comments, questions, or concerns about the city of Dexter's police fire number that we circled? When we were drafting the questionnaire, I think at the time, we didn't feel like we were enough information to pose a question specific enough to a location to an option. So I'm intelligent. Have we asked that question? I think that could have provided us with greater information. We did not have a question about location.
Look, let me.
All right, I got a ton of stuff. I also want to hear from the votes who have come into it too. I think we're pretty far apart a little bit here. I want to hear very much from these people. I got a ton of comments on this.
Okay.
Um, and we've lived in this town for fourteen years now. So we watched this discussion for fourteen years. This council, or previous version of it, did decide on a location. That was the very that was, that was decided. I remember that specifically. You may correct me if I'm wrong, but I still remember that property being purchased and that being your choice. I watched the, um, the August recreation election, the schools go down to the beach, and no small part because of the ambiguity in that. People were annoyed by the ambiguity. And I think the presence of ambiguity in this proposal is not anyone's friend. I think people will vote it down for ambiguity who would otherwise support and want to see a new fire station. The town of Dexter, city of Dexter, had a fire chief for a number of years, who was, as far as I recall, was hired for his expertise in helping cities build new fire stations. And it's my memory of his comments in multiple meetings that I attended, that the Meadowview location was far superior and far more desirable than renovating the old small space on the top of the cliff, if you'll excuse me, in the center of town, where you can't pull fire incidents through. He was very specific about that. And he retired, and he ran out of steam on this before we did, apparently. Um, and I don't think we are well-served by forgetting what he taught us. I'm concerned about the unwillingness of the council to ask, actually asking how much money is needed, asking for less than we've been told is needed, and dedicating our reserves to paying for the, the base design here, and not giving ourselves the flexibility to, you know, adapt for inflation or other things, that my, that million or nine hundred and something thousand dollars I'd have gone for. But now we tie that up, and so we can't do it. It seems to me, I mean, I hear repeatedly that, oh, we don't know how much money we spent, so we, I don't why don't we ask somebody for a specific design, a specific location? And come into that and say, this is what we're putting before the voters, this has been decided. Instead, they're putting this ambiguous thing before the voters, again. Now, the city needs a fire station, so the school board gave up on that. I don't understand that behavior at all. They were shut down for ambiguity. And they should have been more specific and tried again, but they walked away from it, and I don't agree with that behavior at all. I think it's ill-considered and ill-informed. But a lot of concerns about how this is going forward and how many years it's taken. The price as we all know has gone up dramatically over what it would have been if we'd moved on it years ago. I don't think the city is well-served by taking so much time, and I don't think the city is well-served by other things, ambiguity in this proposal. It, it concerns me greatly. And as I've voiced in city council meetings, on more than one occasion, and personally to Sean, I want to see the fire station built. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of this running on for so many years. I think it's a waste of time, it's a waste of money. And I don't think it's well-served of the residents to have what we all obviously admit is an inadequate facility serving the needs of this community. But I have serious reservations about voting against this proposal. And I, I have similar reservations about the, the school board proposal along this. And I know that, um, if I feel that way, others must agree. So I just, I, you know, we're, as I say, I think we're getting way ahead of this conversation. I really want to hear from our professionals over here. Um, and then I think we can dig more into this. But since we're all digging into this, I, I let out a portion of what I'm.
Thank you for sharing. Really, I took it. Lauren?
So as somebody who has not shown up to meetings like the majority of people and hasn't really said or done anything, that sign sitting out there that says future site, does that mean that the city owns it, and that is the future site?
Oh, my God.
We certainly own the property.
Okay.
And it is one potential site.
Okay.
I mean, there's only potential sites right now. It's either the existing or it's worth moving out there. And, and that, and that property was purchased in twenty twenty with the idea that it could be a fire station.
Okay.
Okay. You know, one of the things that we learn about in government is one vote doesn't necessarily bind another. Okay, until you get, one of the exceptions to that is a ballot initiative. When you vote, when the people vote in a general election on a ballot initiative and make a decision about something, that sets that, that, that holds, that holds over the period of that, of that question. Okay, and you know, we, we know. you know, we, we know, we know that if we just raised taxes up to the capital available, we could add about one mil worth of tax to everybody in the city of Dexter. We have about one mil of room. So we, we could raise half of this without a vote of people. We could raise four point two million without a vote of people. You might say, well, can you do with four point two plus the million you got cash? Well, five million doesn't do either of these two options.
Right.
Okay, five million does something much less and or, and or puts a, a moderate renovation or mandate on the current station. And none of us want to do that. The other uncertainty in that is that it would require every council before us, or I'm sorry, following us for the next twenty years to vote that same high mileage level. So we felt it was safe to, since we knew we needed more than the five point two that we could, we got available at our, without having to go to the voters. We felt that the most important thing was to ask the question, would you support the extra mil? In other words, the two mils that we're asking for. Wow, then I'm going to do that.
I just want to quickly make clarification based off of, um, someone to feedback from Todd. And just to back me up on these numbers, we didn't just pull the million a meeting ago. We had, some of that was already allocated for fire. So we took some that was what restricted for.
So there was three hundred thousand for fire. Fire capital improvements. And then there was a hundred and eighty eight thousand, thank you. Specifically set aside for fire facilities. And then the remainder was made up last year from our revenue over expenditure. So our, our fund balance from last year.
Thank you. Cause yeah, I just, I want to make it clear. I would have been comfortable taking a million dollars out of the general fund, just all at once like that.
It's my understanding that the recommended amount to allocate for these designs is ten. And the council felt second, the additional digit in the number was too many. This is what I read in the notes with the. And the council decided that we could ask, that you could ask for eight and then throw in this million dollars that was available from various sources in the budget to make up for it, rather than asking for what you actually need.
So I was the one who said that I thought ten was too big of a number. And I, you can read it that way. It is a little bit more complicated than that. I mean, in discussions. We were looking at these plans and nobody was willing to compromise on anything. So we went back and had the architect say, okay, what was the difference between a ten million dollar plan and this lower amount B? And working with the new fire chief, and we should hear from them, you know, obviously soon. They were able to make adjustments that didn't really take away from the function of the fire station to my opinion, but I wanted to hear from Doug on whether or not he thinks that's true.
Yeah, the, the picture that's on there, if you look at it, has five doors on it. This is the picture out on the the road on the John Road. It was, it was a station that was approximately twenty two thousand square feet with ten room for five double bays. In reassessing what we need to go forward, we have options that will provide equivalent of six vehicles or three double bays, depending on which location you're at. Okay, which is still two more full bays. It's fifty percent increased from what we have today. And we've tried to take into account that there might be some things changing in the fire and emergency service going forward, like the ambulance service, for example. We might need, we might need an extra bay to park an ambulance. But there's been tremendous growth in the Dexter Fire Department and in our partner in communities. You know, twenty years ago, the station that since eighty one forty was the only station that served all three communities plus part of Lima Township, which subsequently pulled out.
Yeah, that is all that work. I mean, I've been in this area that long and I was here when, yeah, Dexter responded because they were it. But now everybody else has something going on and people, you know, work together. Other townships and all that. Plus Dexter is so desirable. The population is only going to increase as we all know.
So let me, let, let me, let Doug handle the question about where our staffing exists today and the model that we're working towards. For a long time, all the people resided right here in Dexter. Everything responded from here.
Yeah.
As Dexter Township built their station, we put one firefighter out there. When Webster Township Station came online this past year, we put another full time firefighter there. So there's now four full time firefighters on in one shift. The goal is to get to two at each station. They never respond by, by themselves. Safe to respond by themselves. Most of the time they need assistance. Well, if we, if, as this evolves and we work towards the model of two firefighters full time at each station, it gives the ability for our station to have to not have everything here to fight everything else in the townships.
Yep.
Thus, it doesn't need to be as big as, this is what I feel, doesn't need to be as big as that initial estimate that was that Chief Smith's, you know, partially steered us towards or had described. Okay, there's, there's a, we're working towards a slightly different model.
Yeah.
But Doug, why don't you introduce yourself and just talk a little bit about what you observed and help, the info you helped provide.
I'm not going to be.
All right. All right, I can take a little bit of this. Jim, why don't you go first?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks very much to everybody for the, the work that's come to bring it to this. I, I want to just make sure I understand, but to try to simplify things down. I, I have an absentee ballot, uh, sitting on my kitchen table and it has the language there. Uh, if, if that's going to be an up or down vote, so, uh, that, that question is how the council has chosen to jump into the loop of how to make this fire station happen. Um, and, and or the Marshawn County Sheriff's portion. And having watched this process for a number of years myself, this to me is an, an important step and an important step forward to jump into the process. Uh, so I'm, I'm very grateful for that. And personally, I trust in the future ability of the future councils to bring forward options consistent with the result of this ballot proposal. I am uncomfortable kind of relegating this language right now. Uh, it's going to go up or down. So if we recognize that compromise is necessary to move forward, I would prefer that we focus attention at this moment on the core question, which is, is the community willing to trust that this amount of money is going to move us in the direction to get bids and solve in the future the sighting problems that have been identified. Uh, I support the fact, I agree that the two options out there improves our future flexibility. But at the moment, it's just simply, is the community willing to front that money? And we've had this conversation for a long, long time. I don't think it's going to put us in a better position to knock down this step and start again with different language with a specific site. Uh, that just costs us time and more money. So my personal opinion is let's move forward. Let's figure out how we can communicate. All of us can communicate to the community about what's foundationally important here, which is fire and police safety. Uh, and trust that this is a step in the right direction and trust that we will have our opportunity for input into the sighting questions later. Um, so I guess if there's a question in, in, and that it, it's, do I have this right? This is just step one. And if we don't do step one and we go back to the drawing board, council's got to come up with something else to stick in front of the voters because we don't have the money out there.
I would say that's accurate.
Okay, I say let's rock and roll and let's get behind this. And let's find a way to promote it in the community based on the fact that the community need is there. That's been voiced for years. And then move on to the next step. Once we have some bids, you got to jump into the loop somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Jim. Zach, thank you.
All right. Yeah, hello from Mackinac Island. I am at the Michigan Association of Planning Conference and and members of the public, the good news is that I don't get to stay here for very long. I have to head out to more activities. It, it kind of breaks my heart a bit how this has, has landed here. I know there's interest in, in moving forward. I have been very zealous about fire station for many, many years. I have spent my own time, my own money to educate myself by attending conferences and visiting fire stations throughout the state. Um, and the reason why it's really important to me is I have a friend from high school who joined the Marines and was very badly injured when the Marines sent him to war with the equipment that they knew was not appropriate for the task they had given to him. So yeah, if, if we had, as mentioned, the longer we wait, the more expensive it gets. In twenty twenty, we could have built a station fully consistent with the needs assessment with the higher quality materials that reduce the cost long term for seven point nine million dollars. If you build that, if you do the inflation escalation to twenty twenty three, that similar station would cost over twelve million dollars. The, we have not prepared a new needs assessment. A needs assessment is something that's based on the mission and the apparatus and the staffing determines the amount of space that you need and the types of spacing all the way down to the type of carpet and flooring. We had that previously. Um, that requires much larger building than what this money would do. I have found that Dexter residents are very smart. And if you present the reason why you're asking for the public funds, what is going to be invested in? They understand. We, we were at the very front of raising fees for water and sewer. Uh, we're in much better shape than many of our surrounding communities and communities throughout the state. We had a clear plan for how we would use money for roads if that mileage were approved. Right now though, what you're basically being asked for is will we cut a tech, a check to the village of Dexter for eight point four million dollars over twenty years? That could be multiple different things. It could be a remodel. It could be a new station. It could be a station in a different, completely different place. All you know is that it's going to be for public service, service, safety facility. Four people will get to decide what, what the final solution is there. Um, there's no requirement for another public hearing. It feels like it's been set up to fail because folks who would support in the current location can't be assured that it will happen. Uh, I support a new fire station. I cannot vote for this because I can't be assured that the money will be going for that. I guess that's all. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thanks, Zach. Okay, I mean, the lady in the back who hasn't spoken yet tonight?
Just a couple of clarification questions. So the property that you're talking about that's across the street from Mill Creek, what was the price tag for that piece of property?
I believe it was five hundred and fifty seven thousand.
All right, and that's in the city's ownership currently?
We own that outright. We don't owe any money on a big cash flow.
Was that purchased with the fire department saying that's the spot we needed? Or was the city just sort of assuming this is where it should be?
It was purchased with the knowledge that it would absolutely work as a fire station, should we choose to move the fire station there.
All right, so then I have a follow up question. The current runs and fire chief were, and answer that. Where is the largest percentage of your runs from the fire station currently to run out through town and then add up on mass road?
The townships have recently experienced higher run body than the city. Slightly.
And the growth is still going in that direction. I mean, I'm assuming houses and those kinds of things because the city just is limited in terms of what it has. I guess that's one of the questions I have. I've heard from fellow neighbors too expensive. Why are we building a nine million dollar on a piece of land? In other words, the, the pieces of the puzzle that you've all described, often, you know, you hear pieces from individuals in, in neighborhoods. And one of the questions was why are we building such a fancy looking, that's the word, fancy looking fire station? Number one, not, not, you know, saying I have a solution for it, but that's one of the questions that keeps coming up. And second of all, where the runs are actually occurring and, and how many people can drive the trucks that you currently are parked? How many employees, firefighters can actually drive all of the equipment that you have? I have a feeling that, um, you probably still are looking for individuals to train for some of those fire equipment. The larger, the larger tankers, is that correct?
Not entirely. Our, our fire orientation program involves extensive drivers training, both experience and then testing and assurance of proficiency before people are cleared. Uh, we only have two firefighters currently who are not clear, three firefighters who are not clear to drive any of our apparatus. So, uh, that, uh, we, we work hard to do that, but we certainly don't push anyone who's not comfortable or not ready to operate the apparatus. So, so we do have, we do have people who are qualified to, to move the trucks.
And in terms of, of the number of employees that you need, is that, has that been sufficient? I mean, across the, you know, spectrum of positions, it seems like firefighters and police are these days tough to get people to sign up to become firefighters and who's, is that accurate as well?
And then that, that is an accurate statement. It, you know, fifteen years ago, if a local fire department in this area posted uh, two full time positions that were open, uh, it was not unheard of to get a hundred and fifty or two hundred applications for those two positions. And, uh, we had neighboring departments post recently two positions and have got four or five applications. So it, it, it has become much more competitive to recruit and retain firefighters.
If I can contribute something to our conversation as far as location and the value of the locations. Then addition, addition to the run volume, that there was interest in the metal view location because of proximity to the schools and all industrial park. But there was a concentration of risk and people at risk in this location, these locations. And then having the fire station closer to those places that are on higher risk had doubt. That, you know, if there was a fire in the school, we'd have hundreds of children there. But if there was a fire in the line industrial park, we could have, you know, toxic chemical releases and things like that that have happened to us all. So that is also part of this kind of.
Right. I just was trying to understand the runs are where a lot of, you know, the energy is put out from that fire station. I was just trying to understand the ramifications of obviously the money spent or whatever on this property. But ultimately, if we're certainly aware of the community, to me, that's just one of the questions that needs to at least be understood.
Yeah, I think, I think there's, like I said, there's, there's if, if we, if we take this to the, the site analysis, one versus the other, there's certainly pros and cons of each site. Okay, to, to your question, you know, yes, in the current environment, if we build a station across from Mill Creek, there's going to be a lot more runs of the department through town to get to Dexter Township and Webster Township. That's certainly factual because that's the direction they would have to have to go that way. The current station is also closest to our larger senior population out there, Gordon Hall. Okay, to, to, to your point of, of what is it close to versus the schools? There's no question if you move the station, somebody else gets closer to the station and somebody gets further away. Okay? The response times that David could talk about, I mean, we're lucky within the city because most of it is within four to six minutes of whichever location we end up citing this at. We're really not talking about a significant difference to get to any point in, in our community. It does, it does take longer to get to the other two townships that our DAFD serves.
It does, it does take longer to get to the other two townships that our DAFD serves if we move the station out by Mill Creek. Our finance manager wanted to add a few comments, I think.
Yeah, I I think it might be helpful for people to understand how the bonding process works. Typically, when we bond for capital projects, we will have the design built done ahead of time. And then we'll structure the bond based on, you know, the the bids and the information that comes back from that. So if this were to be approved, we wouldn't be running right out and bonding immediately. They would go through the process of, you know, deciding what they're going to do, council would, you know, get the design, get the bids, and at that point, we would go out for bonds. So all of those decisions are going to need to be made before we're actually levying any millage. On a bond and bonds are also typically structured so that the costs that are that are expended upfront for this design and and that sort of thing. We can pay ourselves back with the bond. So say we spend, you know, fifty thousand dollars on design or whatever. And then everything and everything's chosen and we go out to bond, then we would pay ourselves back from the bonds. So I just wanted to make sure that people understood that even though if you approve this millage now, that doesn't mean that. We're just gonna go by and then figure what we're gonna do. Council's still gonna have to figure out. What you're going to do before we actually go out for a bomb. So I just kinda want to make that.
Yeah, we're not shovel-ready at any of the locations and we're not shovel-ready. We have a concept that would need to be selected and then refined. And, you know, challenged, gone through a detailed design process and then put out on the street. We haven't even agreed whether we would try to do the traditional design, then bid it and build it or. Hire a construction manager, get them involved. And there's a lot of decisions that go into something like this. But the one person I haven't let talk to either, I haven't heard from is our architect. Before we take any more questions, I see, I don't see hands in the air or on screen. Can you just talk a little bit about, well, what do you think is important relative to the work you've done here, the decisions?
Sure, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for having me here tonight.
Feel free to stand or move around if you do want to.
I'm comfortable sitting if that's okay. I'll just face the roof more or less. So we've gone through quite a process over years as the mayor mentioned when we first sat down. We've looked at a number of things and the two sites we're focused on right now is looking at a redefined scope. So we have gone through a number of iterations of what the station could or should be and where we are now.
Can you give a little bit of your background? I mean, this is a ten million dollar project, give or take. I would like to know your expertise.
Yes, thanks for that. So I'm an architect of forty years in this area now for thirty years. Kind of really focused on public facilities. Ninety-five percent of the work I do is public facilities. Probably working on about six or seven fire stations at this particular moment. Another dozen or so in the last couple of years. Public safety or essential services is an expertise, is my term. It is the kind of work that we do.
Okay, that's what I meant.
Yeah, I'm hands-on involved in the projects. I'm just still a little piece of it. I'm beginning to the end. So it's a good overseeing process that we take and I generally work with owner, review group and my team. I'm not someone you'll see once and that's for it.
Yeah, yeah, well, I know, I know, it's what I.
So our studies have led us to this new redefined scope where we're looking at similar building function handling and operation from site to site. Mayor mentioned that one building is bigger than the others, so the main street site existing as it is. Has some very mild components to it. Apparently the lower level and the bays that are there now, so the sheriff's department side and administration living side are two ends. Basically, the things that we think we can eliminate and use the superstructure that's there. To reconstruct the fire station in about eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty feet. That would give us a similar space function as a new station. About fourteen thousand eight hundred square feet on that. So you can see there's a difference in size. And it's because of the constraints that an existing superstructure involves along the design flexibility. So we're reusing those existing bays, four of them. On the existing building, you can add in two new bays. That would be of what you would see in a modern today's fire station in terms of size. And accessibility for the apparatus as well as personnel. The four that we would consider to keep are a challenge because of their existence size. They're not a walkable woodwork thing. So you still end up at six bays on Main Street and auxiliary bay in the lower level. So that would be for the less commonly used apparatus and more less storage. We reuse the lower level of the area for fire support and storage and also for sheriff. I'm gonna walk over there because I think it might be clear if you don't mind, just to explain to people.
And everybody has the drawing in front of them, David, so you couldn't.
So if you're looking at your drawing, you can see the bays, six through three are the existing four. And then one and two and the area just to the left of it is the fire support. That's the new portion of the suggested plan. And below that new portion is a unfinished basement called bonus space. At this point, it would be future training. By adding that space at Main Street level because you're developing down to the park side level for future use. On the where it's a fire department all the way to your right, which is basically the red administration living is now. Would be a new two-story apartment which will house administration on the upper half and then living on the lower level, living in the neighborhood. And the access to the fire station for public purposes would be from Alpine. We basically have a bridge element going from Alpine into the administration. To eliminate one of the really big compromising parts of this is that public enter right in the neighborhood and it's a little bit confusing, disorganized and unsafe. So we'd be putting a partner on Alpine and we'd get you directly into fire administration without the interfering with fire, fire activity down on Main Street. And sheriff would be back on the park side. So those components produce a little bit of extra space in the lower level during the sheriff and these places to live right now. This scheme also accounts for some of the added square feet that I mentioned between eight hundred and. Five hundred and fifty, eighty thousand, five hundred and fifty and the forty thousand, eight hundred and forty. Some of that is just accounted for the sheriff. Which could be the sheriff if he built a new fire station at now also. He could opt for leave that there. Any questions on that? I was pointing out that I was referring to its little pedestrian grid from Alpine.
I have a question about the new type of path. I I drive down that section of Alpine, which is my frequency, I need to drive to work at the library mostly. And it's already a pretty tricky place to turn and having cars pulling me in and out of those spaces while people are trying to turn the corner. Gives me pause for concern about whether you need to put a stoplight at that corner. Or manage the traffic system on the way or not give the our police officers a new location or a little bit more.
That's a, that's a good point. And we recognize that's a challenge there. There's also some telecommunications and infrastructure that would. Have to be manipulated to make that work too. So maybe not exactly like that, we scoot a little bit towards the library to get a little extra here. Terms of traffic, like we didn't look at that when we did the site analysis and we look at it out here just to give a way to give. Priority movement around there to the fire department, not necessarily at Alpine, but right directly in Alpine. So there was some study on that. We didn't get too far into that until we really decided this is a little issue.
My question refers to. You actually have your, your fire trucks coming in from behind. The street, the ramp that's there right now, if the birthday come down and around and then.
And that might be a little misleading, so I'm glad you pointed it out so I can clarify. The arrows down below at the park level are into two existing overhead doors now that are into the lower level. One would be potentially for the sheriff, one would be potentially for fire or auxiliary type of equipment or. Yeah, but you look in the front side, there are six similar arrows, two in the, two in the addition part and four in the existence. We have six entrances or six apparatus exiting on the main street.
Okay, so then the way that the the current setup, so that entry point. That access point, the all, all of the new designs that you've got in the four bays that are there right now, plus the two that you're. This design. Going half a wide. That whole entry point that's on Dane Street right now to comment on.
Yeah, so there's significant injuries, probably twenty-four to thirty feet that range.
Where where's the testing traffic penalty?
We wouldn't redirect it any different than it is now. We go right across the front. However, there's, there's been some conversations on the plan right now, have some vertical element that goes from rear down to park side. It's not in the plan, but it has been thoroughly explored as a, a new stairway and elevator. It's an option. Both of these are in conceptual stages. So as any site gets selected, some of those details will get further flushed out. Whether they may get into the final scheme or not, they certainly can look at it.
Traffic light, if there was a run to be made, that could stop traffic or. Would you have a more improved alert system to alert people? Because you're gonna have more, if you're making availability, more trucks, more. More equipment, the conclusion is there's going to be more.
I think your question is, will it be some sort of alert system? Yes. That it will be interlinked or interlocked with the lighting, the traffic light, where to be a traffic light will be. Otherwise, there would still be some alerting method. Some video, some audio. So that's the scheme at Main Street. There, I mentioned the one thing I thought, just pointing out is that. The existing bays would remain and they're not exactly what we were designing to be. For the map site, obviously, we have a lot more flexibility with the scope, the refined scope as we redefine the project, it's the same. It's a six bay station with administration, living and neighborhood facility and all the support necessary for the apparatus. I mentioned in the main street, we have a byproduct of the basement being for future development for the training. In this scheme, we just identified where it could go. If we don't have anything built before. But we identified in the plan that future training space could be added to this. We also say the same thing in this orange sheriff. We already planned that out. We just didn't show it in this version. So we're trying to make it comparable apples to apples. That could suffice a sheriff in either version, whether it's fires there or fires here. Or sheriff could be moved to map and it's already been kind of fucked through.
Our community is not trained for over time. And our district demand would expand from the services that we buy on the human description. Which of these locations is more able to handle future expansion and development in the year?
Well, without a doubt, this is more able to handle expansion. Expansion would happen in a couple of ways for fire. I think it would be an outbuilding for additional equipment. Whether there's training, some kind of thing that you would need. Another thing that happens with firefighting, the chief could speak to those a bit more. The reasons fire stations expand. Is for additional services being added to what you already do. Right now, we're accommodating those things, but there's gonna be some additional like EMS, that sort of thing, those sorts of services. That's what expands firefighting facilities.
Are there any guidelines as to, because as I said before, there's plenty of building going on here. More people are living here all the time. So are there any guidelines for the population and what type of facilities need to be? Available for a hundred thousand versus five hundred thousand versus a million people, you know, whatever.
Yeah, there are, there are guidelines, several that we look at. One would be response times, which we talked about a little bit at the beginning. You serve the area that you're required to serve and would be within this station. Or is a new station needed to supplement that added road area, whether it's density or just area.
I mean, we, surely we must know about future subs that are being tossed around, right?
Well, I was gonna, if everybody will allow me to estimate, you know, we're five thousand people in the city right now. I think the townships have another fifteen to eighteen. Round numbers, that might be off old, but I'm estimating nine in each or seven and a half to nine in each. I think that's pretty close. So, you know, the, in terms of, in terms of sheer. Regional service, Dexter Township, Webster Township, the city, we're about twenty-three thousand people right now. So you're talking about a hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, million. That's not, that's not, that's on a different scale from my perspective.
Right, I mean, I'm just throwing numbers out. We all know there'll be more people here. And the other thing is the other facilities that are out there in the townships. Obviously, you're looking to coordinate with that.
We, we.
So you don't have too many vehicles showing up for, you know, emergencies or whatever.
Double, we have about fifteen hundred runs a year?
We're gonna be close to sixteen hundred this year, yes.
Okay, so we're talking, you know, between around four runs a day is what we typically have. Yeah, you had a run right next door to you, not too long ago. We do participate in mutual aid. I mean, when there is a serious, when there's a serious event. Doug, you should take over here. I mean, I'll talk.
I have a really bad response to a question. This is my twenty-sixth year. Worked for the department all of that time in different roles and in two thousand and seventeen. Chief Smith appointed me as assistant chief and a certain acquisition until his departure in June and and. Have taken over as as interim fire chief and that's when I, I have been. Mostly discussing the fire station plans with the chief up until that time when now I've gotten involved with the council and and with David. And so and in. I worked with a different architect and came up with a renovation plan for eighty-one forty and I actually authored a federal grant to try to get some money to do that. And it was much less aggressive than than what we're looking at now, but there's been comments that. This has been a recognized deficiency of the fire department for for a long time. So the fact that we're talking about making improvements is fantastic. So as I understood my role and when I I joined in in June was. We have a piece of property, we have an existing station and we need to understand what would it take? To improve the facility and make it, make us as mission-ready as possible today and preserve some. Changes in the future and and what's that gonna cost? And so we really have to look at both options and go through the program. Which is what is it we want that fire station to do? What do we want to park there? Who do we want to sleep there? How do we want them to get from the sleeping spot to the truck to respond when they come back? How do they clean? How do, how do we administrate and and manage the department and all of those tasks and functions? So we went through the, the early designs. Piece by piece, and and I apologize, we're on a chimney fire right now, so I'm listening to make sure it's coming in. And to really look at what was the size that we needed. Understanding that these discussions started before we had the two substations. And so it totally makes sense to coordinate with the substations and understanding how are we gonna move staff and apparatus around to best serve the entire area? Without diluting the importance of serving the city. And so all of those things led to us being able to reduce some of the original square footage estimates. And also understanding that some of the things we wanted, we could postpone and maybe add at a, at a later time. As the department grew, as our needs changed and and things, but focusing on really what's the immediate operational needs and. I did not support. Original designs because they just didn't work operationally and. David listened to that feedback and his team has worked very quickly to incorporate. My suggestions and opinions and. As the mayor said, I, I feel fortunate. To be directing a fire department that has two. Good options. And in fact, I'm torn because there's some nostalgia to the, to the place where we've been in for, you know, sixty years, seventy years. And as has been recognized, circulation from there out into the townships is. Better facilitated from there, a little less traffic through town. However, as the department grows and as we add firefighters. We're gonna add them at the substations. Which is gonna reduce the need for firefighters in the city to leave the city. For a medical call, the substations can handle their own calls as we add staff. They don't need to leave for fires, but that's much less often. Than we respond to medical rescue calls. So all of those variables are coming in into play, which is why we. And I mean, a lot of this work has been completed. Over weekend and evenings and in the last few weeks in preparation for answering the question. Can we get something that is functional and really serves our needs today and tomorrow? For the cost that we think is reasonable. To ask people to fund and what we got is the answer to that question is yes, and we can do that at either place. There is more work that needs to be done. I need to do some more thinking and we need, I need to play out some more scenarios to understand, is there a preferred location?
What's the percentage of medical versus fire call?
Medical calls are probably about seventy to seventy-five percent of what we do. And then fire calls make up the rest of that, but fire calls include car accidents. Grass fires, smoke alarms and false alarms. You know, the number of true destructive structure fires fortunately. Is low. It's, it's one to two dozen. That, you know, having a fire in a house and some of those are very minor, you know, pan on stove or something versus a full total house fire. That's because of building codes, that's because of fire prevention, that's because of fire education and something we're certainly looking to focus on is. Risk reduction. How do we help everyone else stay safe so that we don't have those destructive fires and don't have to. Run all of this equipment across the whole area more, any more frequently than needed. And so. You know, I, I can, I can understand the seemingly. Ambiguity or undecidedness in these two options. I can say from an operational standpoint as a fire chief. We can, we can operate the fire department from either of those options and. As we've talked about, there are some advantages and disadvantages to both locations. And we just haven't had the time to decompress from the rapid sort of program analysis to evaluate. If there's a one that comes out on top and that's absolutely what. Will continue to happen and continue in the next set of meetings as we, as we move forward, but. The first question is, does the community support a need to improve fire services and. You know, I, I think there was some. Discussion from, from a comment online about, you know, is there a level of trust in. The department, in the architect and in the council to. Continue that analysis and make a solid decision that really works for the community.
I don't know what question you.
Yes, please.
Based on what Chief just said. If the location could. This bond that they're asking us to hold on, would they be able to cover the cost of doing this?
And that's what we spent the last two months in very focused. Meeting and work to ensure that we can say yes to that question, that we've worked hard to ensure that. A renovation project often has some hidden costs. We're continuing to try that. The new bill, we have a little bit better understanding, but there still are big questions about material.
It's an uncertain construction market right now and we know that prices are rising. So. We, like Chief said, we have built some of that into it, but that is a factor. The uncertainty of the marketplace. Shows up every time the resume.
So because the supply chain is so unreliable. That the project takes longer. What makes up the difference? The cost? And then are you gonna be coming out again or what?
Well, I think, I think that this council's gonna have to. Be diligent about continuing to save. I don't think our job is done saving. Just because we said we have a million dollars saved, I think we need to look to continue to do that. Just in case that happens. I mean, I don't think anybody in this room can tell me when inflation is going to be done and they're gonna be back in normal, whatever normal is these days. Okay, but I think we have to keep, that's our job to try and keep planning for that contingency and keep. Keep dollars aside that could go to exact.
Question, the council's done a pretty darn good job of being this way, it's flexible for the last. Ten, fifteen years. When we went from a village to a city.
Thank you.
You know, that turmoil we're seeing, you know, and it was pointed out to us where the savings were. So that was really communicated really well. And I think, you know, but the mind is a bug. It comes down to, you know, so.
And that's, and that's the heart of this question. That's the heart of this question is how do you feel, how do you feel about the number?
Because when you say either option would work. The first thing that comes to my mind is, well, if you're gonna stay where we are and make improvements. You need eight point four million. If you're gonna move and build something else, is eight point four million enough?
It's a lot easier to predict costs at a new site than it is to understand the true cost of renovating.
I guess. Because of the inflation and the supply chain and, you know, I'm sorry, but we're talking with such an important.
The supply chain thing has been a huge variable for the last couple of years. And price escalation has been rather crazy and unpredictable. But there have been some good signs of things leveling off, the bigger parts of construction. The part that hasn't is labor costs. Material cost and availability has become a little bit more factored in. Labor costs are the bigger concern for the area. So we keep a really close eye on that. And the budgeting that we've gone to ours is based on some really early concepts. But that process doesn't stop, it continues all the way through the course of design, technical documentation.
Take a minute to jot a couple of things down based on some of the comments, bear with me. First, I want to thank Doug and David because in the last couple of months. They really did work late into the night. Throughout the weekends, back and forth, questions, plans, the design. I was. I had the honor of sitting on the, some of the design team meetings on behalf of the council and it was just amazing to. Watch that dedication and work that they both put in us asking them to bring this to you. As fast as possible and they did an amazing job of doing that. When, was a comment about Chief Smith and his vision, he had a vision and. It's not that the vision he had was wrong. Our world has changed in the last two, three years since that vision was there. It would not, in my opinion, or me, would not be good stewardship of. Your money if we had just said. This is the vision, let's move with it, forgetting about the pandemic that not only brought the. As you are talking to the supply chain and such, but also makes paying taxes for our residents harder. Than it was. We also had a better understanding of our growth. And we also have two new stations. In Dexter Township and Webster Township that can provide and as Chief Armstrong talked about. Thinking about staffing and what they can take to then what, what can we do in the city for you? I appreciate Ms. Griffin. Correcting me on the language of the question we put out at the survey. It doesn't change the comments we have received. Some of those comments shows the preferences for different aspects, location. In terms of service time, in terms of closeness to various. Facilities, closeness to our historic buildings, things like that. So I. For, for me, even though I have my preference. I wanted to actually pause and think about those comments that are in. And I think in that sense that then working with David and Doug. These two options that they have worked together has been a work to think. Of our time now versus that vision that was at a few years ago. I wanna also mention that what was reduced was not to put. Our firefighters and their staff in danger. It was not to reduce the safety and security of them or the safety and security of the citizens. What was reduced and put at was how to optimize. Operations, how to make things more efficient, what are the things that could potentially be built later? What are the items that can be taken up? For example. One of the ones was the training room component. Are there other options that those things can happen? But at the same time reduce that amount. So actually like the conversation about the base and the conversation about the training room. Reduced almost one point seven million. So it was not that the desire was to reduce. Based on cheaper material in a way to put anybody in danger or reducing in terms of not considering operations and such. They went into many conversations and meetings and back and forth to make sure that things are safe and sound for the. Fire department as well as our citizens and for that operation. So for me, when we looked at that meeting in terms of coming to you and asking for money. The reduction, when we started the conversation, we started with. The proposal that Mr. Mitchell had put together and on that motion with almost eleven million dollars and a location. And as the council, we worked on it to. To bring it to what it is. A consensus we had was. At this time, is it appropriate to put eleven million dollars in front of people and ask for that? Even if it is to save for this and for that vision, or is it better because of the circumstances that have changed in our lives? In the last two, three years. To look at it again. And at least for some of us, that was that eleven million is too much. We can still provide that and with a fresh eye and looking at things and having a lesser amount and. Still be able to have great options. If we, time wise, had more time before, if November wasn't so close. We might have had more time to talk about the location. At that meeting, because there was one vote no of the amount, it very quickly. Was evident that we couldn't. Have enough time. To properly talk about location with, and with good designs that are here. So we thought that what we could. Put in front of you is the, is the question for the funding. And then work on this. And wait more. Thank you.
I believe that one vote no was actually for a more expensive. The person wished a more expensive facility, not that the nine point four was too expensive. So I, you know, there's no opposition to nine point four, it's one person wanted grander. No matter how you do it, we're all old enough to know that tomorrow the gumball is gonna cost more than it did today. And the longer we take. Just another ten years, the more expensive the gumball is going to be. And so I think the Dexter, the city of Dexter and the council need to say, let's get on the horse and let's ride it. Because it's gonna be more expensive tomorrow.
I think we're ready, we just need the motors.
I, I do think council has work to do. You're familiar with the impact of the. I, I do feel very strongly that the. The recreation proposal went down because of that theory, also because of the unfortunate twist to put it on the ballot in August when people tend to vote no for anything that asks for money. That was a poor choice, but I think even more so, it was the ambiguity of that proposal. That sank it. And I think ambiguity of this proposal risks sinking. And I don't think it's an advantage, frankly. I really don't. I don't think, I don't think you're catching the people who like this side or that side. I think they'll look at it and say, well, that's not the side I'm on, I'm gonna vote no. Even though I want this fire station, that I don't think, I don't want a lot of people who are opposed to voting the fire station more and to win it all with what the community needs. But I do think ambiguity is not your friend. And that there's work to be done. And right now, if people have ballots in our hands, I got a ballot in all of a sudden, so I can make my vote.
How have we done explaining that ambiguity today too? Now that you've attended the meeting and we've answered, we tried.
One of my thoughts, now that I've listened to the presentation. Appreciate some comments here, paid my help. I'm getting. Two different messages from our fire chief and our architect here. That, I mean, and it's obvious to anybody who looks at it, there's a lot more flexibility at that location than there is at this location. We buy here, we invest here and that's as far as it goes. And over here, there is space, there is land, there is possibility to adapt to the future. I remember early proposals they had at a community meeting round that it doesn't appear of this design anymore. So. I know, I appreciate, our chief says that vote or work for now and for the future, but. I know it's, it's. I think it's fairly clear that we do find that we need something, we have the possibility to add it there. And here, we're, we're building and planning every square inch that we've got already. And I don't see enormous amount of flexibility in changing that. I am concerned, I mean, I've worked at the university. Or been a student there for thirty-five years, you know, and certainly know the difference between renovations and building there. And know exactly what David said, you know, there are, there's a whole lot of risk involved there that we won't know until we start stripping things apart.
Todd, I have the utmost confidence. That if we. If we put all of that out there at the time of the site selection. If most of the people feel that way, I'm sure that sentiment will come out to us and it will help us make the right choice. Yeah, I mean, what I'm trying to say here is. We, we looked at all the variables at the time we had and you could, you could criticize past councils for taking a long time to get to this point, but this council. This council, this group of seven. Over the last year was able to get to a point where we're ready to ask, ask a question. And that question is centered on your comfort with paying two mils over twenty years. Okay, we, we think we can get something done. All of the points you're making. All of the points you're making have, everyone, all of you, they're all good questions, and we've wrestled with some of those, okay, often. But today's question, or November eighth's question. Is will you trust us to to spend eight point four million? To solve this problem, and I think when we go out and get additional public input. The points you're making about the MAF site, or the former MAF site, are gonna play out, or could potentially play out. A lot of people see exactly what you see, but we, I mean, we have a dozen people in the room, thirteen. Now, Candace has joined us, that have signed in, okay, the the reality is, is I now know how most of you feel. Julie hasn't said anything yet. Grisms haven't said anything yet, okay, so we we maybe we have now nine, nine inputs, or whatever, I'm doing the math right. Okay, um most of the people that I talk to on the street. Like that we put a question in front of them because they wanna see this move forward. And they understand that there is some ambiguity there, you can create as much ambiguity as you want on this topic, then I wanna do it. But to us, to this council, understanding how much the voters would allow us to spend to solve this problem is the most important one. And my read of a no vote on this is gonna be that nobody wants to spend that much. Now, that could be the wrong, that could be the wrong interpretation, and we can go, we can go and do surveys afterwards and ask, you know, why did. You vote no, and and try and figure out what the answer is, my my view of it is, is that. People are gonna think eight point four is too much, or it's not the right time to spend eight point four. But we feel confident that we can make a significant impact on our public safety facility, straight point four million, and that's why the question was structured that way.
Sean, um my straw vote among my friends, and let's face it, they're mostly senior citizens. And they don't like the proposal because they want to know specifically what they're looking for. Where it's going to be and how much it's gonna cost and what the design is.
Okay.
Um and the other question is, the two new uh stations that have been built. Uh I think they came in for considerably less than what you're proposing, is that right?
Yeah, I don't know the exact cost, Doug, maybe you do, of the, they write that the Webster Township station, that was, I said, between two and three million. And I think Dexter Township was in that same range.
I thought Webster was between three and four.
Okay, alright.
So the question is, if they can do it for that amount of money, why can't we?
Well, we may be able to, we're going off the estimates that the architect have given us. I mean, we don't know what the final price is today, we're giving you our best guess.
That's what my people are saying, they don't wanna vote for it because they want to know how much, where.
That's a hard certainty to have.
Can I add something, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The budget estimates presented for this project is total project cost. The numbers you hear about for other projects being built are construction costs, that's bid big cost. This is more of a turnkey, everything that goes into building a project.
It's a heck of a lot of difference between three or four million and eight million dollars.
But and that doesn't account for everything, I'm just saying there is a very different perspective when you look at costs that you hear about. And I'm not really familiar with those stations in or when they were built, and it's easy to say in the last couple of years, things have grown up forty percent. But that's when they were built, that pretty much accounts for it.
What Webster started, I think, before twenty and finished in.
So started, so it was probably bid in nineteen, that was nineteen was an optimal time to bid, people were panicking about what am I gonna do next, or they bid things low. That was a perfect time to bid.
Another confusion that I I see is, I believe the sign on MAF property says. Proposed Dexter Fire Station, and people don't read that proposed, they read it as Dexter Fire Station location. And the ones who don't want that are saying, okay, I'm voting this down because I don't want that, I want it down there.
I was not in favor of putting the sign up, I thought it was a very misleading thing to do at the time, but.
I I just say that's one of the problems.
Put the sign up, and then we're we're facing that decision now, we're facing that. So now we're gonna be.
Yes, um so um in another point to that is that our interlocal agreement with, as you know, um. For the Dexter area fire department mentions that um city of Dexter. Has the main fire station, so the the things that are included in our fire station. Are more extensive than they are in those two substations, so this is the main, and those are substations. So there is some difference in amongst their energy and the sheriff.
How about those we haven't heard from, anything? Okay.
Do that, and once you build that old one, it's not gonna look. Like piece of history then, is is all changed. It's not gonna look like what it looks like now.
The way I see it, as you got it here and there, most of the expense of remodeling it. The old one is gonna be uh. It's gonna be moving things, like in Alpine Street, you gotta, you're gonna almost take out all parking. On Alpine Street for civilians, and you're gonna use it for firefighters. You're moving the present day parking at the fire station, uh driving up. Where the sheriff's department is now, you're putting two bays in, single bays. So you only have one, two, what, two, six single bays. And you're gonna have to widen the driveway that's in there. It looks like for me, I'm not sure you've got the white of the driveway. To me, I'm thinking you guys wanna have the retaining wall, because they're a hill. Because you've got parks in it, so you're gonna be taking out almost all the driveway that leads down to the park.
Just to clarify that, widening is is a, that's a walkway that's not there now, so we're adding a walkway. Along the drive here, along along the edge of the drive.
I would like to save the uh research to go on, to do all that there. Versus putting it in the other place, I mean, that whole area, you know, they were talking about on the other side of the river when they cleared it. Building a beer garden and this and that, it's like, you know, that's crazy. I wonder if people going out, the traffic's already screwed up, what happens when a truck gets caught in the lane, you know? It's like, you're having some injury, it's like it's a job.
But but still, if you put that walkway in there, you're still gonna have to put a retaining wall in so that you can put parking next to it. That's, that's what I see, to be, are we getting, you're gonna be taking out. Most of the driveway that goes to the park now, you're gonna be taking it out. Because you can't put parking like this, the way you've got, and still have a driveway, a two lane driveway.
It's not planned to take out any parking or drive, the drive that's there now is intended to stay. The sidewalk is at, and there isn't.
You got parking right next to your your sidewalk.
You're on the first one, you you, you're looking, you're holding up the page that is, that's the new site.
And that's a different.
That that's on Dexter out of Rome, sir. This is your site?
Have a print. So this is the, so that's Main Street, that's a diagonal to the park, so that would remain in the middle, and that's just a sidewalk being added.
Well, listen to your talk at one time.
Let me just make sure this conversation is done, sorry. Please.
So that's right here, so this is Alpine now, there's no parking on Alpine, this would be. So this would be Alpine right here, not that grid of ones that's in center. So this existing thing right now is parking down there, kind of moved aside, that's kind of the existing building there. This would be an add, it's down the little flat area, the short of a ridge, new site.
Okay.
Without the right baby.
No, glad we got that part of David, thank you. Alright, thank you, Lori, do you have a question?
I don't know, I think this is, um it's sort of like something else, but I thought there was some conversation about having a job to that. For A W is and that whole area there, is that my imagination?
Um there is a potential roundabout at the corner of Dexter Chelsea and. Main Street or Highland Lake, however you want to call it, once it gets across the bridge. That, that is a road commission project that they are pursuing.
Yeah, so as that factor into all the stuff, if you do renovations there.
Well, i- i- I mean, whether the roundabout is there. And the fire stations at eighty one forty, or the roundabouts there, or the fire stations, that the other, fire trucks are gonna still, it's gonna be have to be designed.
It's just such a congested area to me, it's also kind of. I'm just saying.
Yep, yep.
Sean, I think you're about to say this, just to be clear, we don't have any control over that.
Yeah, well, we.
I don't know, I know, I'm just, I'm just stating facts, this has nothing to do with people's personalities. And what you have control over, these are the facts, well, just like.
But what like.
The fire chief is stating facts about the station.
Well, so so Lori, what we've seen, what we've seen in in our community, as well as in other places of Washington County. Is that roundabouts have improved.
Right.
Traffic circulation at very congested areas of the community, okay, most obvious to us here. Is down at Baker and Dan Hoyle and Baker and Shield.
Right.
That doesn't mean all the cars go away because you build a roundabout, you're gonna have the same amount of cars.
I I understand that.
Hold on, hold on, you 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 asked the question, let me just finish the thought. What what was observed, the key component of roundabout is that it clears quicker.
Right.
When the opportunity presents itself, it clears quicker than a traditional stop stop or light infused intersection. So you you still have the same amount of traffic, you're still dealing with the number of cars, because people aren't changing the pattern, unless they're totally avoiding their roundabout. Nonetheless, it clears quicker, so the road commission sees Dexter Chelsea. Over there is as an opportunity. To help it clear quicker, it'll have to be designed no matter what, just like the other ones were, so that fire vehicles and safety vehicles can get through there. Yes.
Alright, so I think of the fire hall, I guess, why do we need like a Taj Mahal fire hall? I mean, that is. The renovations for the brand new one, I mean, we really need all of that. We've got all these, they're ten minutes away to the house. I mean, yes, I agree that there needs to be some improvement, but to that amount and to that extent. This doesn't register with me, so that's my two cents.
We're we're trying to take into account ways to modernize and plan a little bit for the future, so. That's why it's bigger than the the current station is, I mean, we we simply can't just. We can't build one the same size as the current station, to do everything in a lot, and right now, the space in the existing station. The the kitchen air, kitchen area doubles as an office area, as a lobby area, as a. It's right next to the response equipment, and the 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 bathroom is right there, it's it's an everything on top of. And and there's no, there's no way to physically build all of those functional needs in that amount of space. So the the station needs to get bigger, I don't know, I I've heard Taj Mahal before. And I realize that these look much bigger than what we have. We're probably guilty of living with a lot less than we've needed for a long time, for a long time, and. You know, again, we're we're trying to do the best we can to show you what we think the space would be. With the dollars that we think the community can support, which is the two mills. There was a lot of uncomfort about going beyond that, that amount, and that's where the eight point four is derived from. But there's no question that whatever we were gonna do, it's gonna get bigger, even if we, even if we only renovated the existing station. Let's say the village doesn't pass, and this council decides to raise the village a mill on our own. The station is gonna get bigger than it is, cause you're not gonna, you're not gonna tear down the existing living area and build it smaller or the same. You won't be, it'll it'll be bigger, one way or the other, it's been bigger. And I know, I'm not trying to compare that actually, because I want, I want this, I want this, I want this to pass, because I think it's the right step.
I know, I flew over to Moing City, we didn't have to last. Well, I think you're all doing a great job, thank you for, you already discussed all that.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
As a main station, I'll kind of, if I can, Mr. Mayor, I was gonna throw something out there.
Sure.
As a main station, as I said, in terms of size, this is a very frugal, efficient. Plan at fourteen thousand eight hundred forty square feet, using the MAF site as an example. Comparatively, I'm working on two other main stations, and the third one kind of early on in its. Um design thought, and they're all the twenty thousand square foot reach, serving six bays. Is a bit bigger, I'm doing one in Green Oaks Township right now, that's eighteen thousand courtyard. It's just over twenty thousand, just finished one in Highland Township, that's right around eighteen thousand. And starting one in the city of Warren, it's gonna be close to thirty thousand, so this is frugal, and it's not like we're missing a lot. It's definitely very efficient.
Where did we start?
We were at twenty two thousand initially, then we were down to twenty thousand. And then we didn't compromise in the functionality, we changed some things around in the approach, like using the dorms as an example. In the locker rooms where we first started with a very traditional locker room, shower, restroom. Now we have a locker room for gender neutral and an individual bathroom, so that really changed square footage, reduced costs. But didn't change functionality or operation, and that kind of improvement, we did it a couple places. We did that in the office area and in the dorm area, so it netted out square footage saving, but didn't compromise. Uh functionality, so as a result, building is smaller, but still has the same mission that we started with. Six bays or six drive through bays at MAF, was was a hundred square feet more than doing three double bays. That was, that felt like a whole run to me, to be able to accomplish that with a very insignificant amount of square footage. Shows a whole, this is a very frugal, efficient plan for main station. I don't think we're finding the main station, the size, square footage in the metro area at all, it's really. Even though it's gone through a very vigorous, quick pace, it's very efficient so far. And I think we can do a little better if we develop the design, whether it's main street or MAF.
Okay, thanks, Lori.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I was gonna, we uh saw some construction cost reference data, and it includes that Green Oaks Township fire station you mentioned. And at least at the time, this was prepared, it was eight point seven million dollars for eighteen thousand three hundred square feet, maybe it. Uh but the voters approved a twelve point five million bond, and that also included the cost of a truck. Uh so just to say, there are other stations that are about this, you know, larger, costing more, that are being approved at this point. Um I also did a little research into Highland Township, and they had a similar structure. And that they had a main station and two substations, what I feel like is different between, we have this area fire department. Whereas they have municipal fire departments, and so we are serving a similar population as they are. But the cost of their stations is spread out across their entire population that they're serving. And so I think one potential unintended consequence of our interlocal agreement that was entered into back in the eighties. Is the way it was written, that Dexter needed to have the main station, which we had at the time, and if the, and if the townships wanted a substation, they had to pay for it. It doesn't say in the interlocal agreement that we have to pay for the main station ourselves in the city of Dexter. I brought that topic a couple of times at that meeting, but I don't really know what the workaround is, to go back to the township and say, hey, now let's cross share on the cost of these buildings. Now that you built your substation, but I think that's really the hard part about all of this. I don't think the problem is that we have an area fire department that has a design of a main station and two substations. I don't think the problem is what is being proposed in the main station uh versus within the substations. I don't think the problem is what is being proposed in the main station, uh, versus what in the substations, I really think the root of the problem is that if five thousand people who are being asked to pay for the main station. As opposed to all of the station costs being distributed across the, all, the entire population. It's just, as many times as I've brought that up, it just didn't seem like there was a clear workaround. So we're in this position of needing to provide a main station, and, you know, wanting to, which right by the, the area, but also wanting to do what's right by us. Um, and so as Chief Armstrong said, you know, if there is this potential or likelihood. That as the townships grow, and a greater number of calls are going to be EMS, and they're going to have two full-time firefighters at the substation, then all the more reason to build what we want, where we want. More in the heart of the city of Dexter, I guess, as opposed to what's going to better serve the other areas, so just a couple more. But, um, again, I don't know what you do with interlocal agreement, it is what it is, and for me, that's been the biggest sticking point about all of this. It's why isn't, why wasn't this cost able to be shared across the entire area, but it just didn't seem like there was a workaround.
Yes, one of the keys that I have is presented here and here, and probably felt by many, and that is, whatever you do, make sure the public is informed. I mean, really informed, don't assume we're smart enough to figure anything out. We're not smart enough to decide A or B locations, we're not smart enough to see maximum cost versus projected versus maybe cost. Ensure the public knows, and I agree on the school village, the school situation, people said, I'm not voting for something I don't even understand. Or that I don't know enough about. Just make sure from a board standpoint, or a council standpoint, that the public is as informed as you possibly can do. Then they'll vote yes.
So, Rob, was the newsletter helpful?
Newsletter was excellent, I told you, I didn't state this.
No, not that one, thank, thank you, not that, the, the more recent one that had this.
Oh, this one?
The one that had this information in it.
Too fine print, can't read it.
That's what I said.
I go home, take my magnifying glass.
That's exactly what I said.
I read it later, I was, magnifying glass like that, I said, ah, I can see, I can see.
Okay, did I not say that exact same thing every day?
One of the problems, and, and you'll, you'll understand this as you get older, the white, the darker color does not show up as well as the black. This was helpful, but it was hard.
Color wise, it's all.
Okay. Well, what was in the newsletter that you just held up was Legible?
Yeah.
That was really, okay.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine, this is too small.
Okay.
But the public just wants to feel, oh, I understand what the hell they're going to talk about. You know, not like, oh, they want some money, I don't have any idea what they're going to do with it. Maybe they don't either. Give them the feeling, you know what you're going to do about it, I'd just love to know with nine people remaining, just to see how many say, from what my opinion is. Go new location or renovation, I'd love to see what this nine or ten people would say. I bet you make a significant difference.
You can tell us if you want.
No, not when you're going to vote yes or no for the whole project, but of the two locations, which location makes more sense? Nobody even mentioned tonight about the whole procedure of construction, whether it's one year, two years, three years. You had all those construction trucks and all that, and the fire trucks, and all that milling around, and the park people, and the Alpine parking, and the restaurants, and all that is going to take place right there. Versus the same stuff taking place out here, much more peacefully. Now, whether this is the geographically best location or not, I can't imagine the difference in time. Down to a number analysis, between getting out of this fire station to the fire, or seventy-five percent healthcare, medical. Is really a significant factor. I think it's more of what can we give for the buck, what confusion does the cost to the city, what confusions are the cost to citizens? Which one would the fire department like to work out of, which would be more efficient for fighting fires, or medical, et cetera, et cetera? That's the one I go with, not whether I get to the fire faster from this one or that one. I mean, that's a factor, but you only talk in minutes, not hours. But I'd like to see it before I die, I don't expect to be more than fifteen years longer, okay, so.
Fair enough, hopefully you're twice that long.
Hit your ass on the stick and get it back.
First, the top of that is a closing.
And I thank people like you, whether there's money in your pocket for it, or prestige, or love, I don't care, somebody has to do the work, you appear to be doing it.
I have a passion for what I'm doing it, and I fell in love with Dexter eight years ago, and I'm trying to do the best I can by it.
You know, sixty-some years ago, my wife and I said, let's move to Dexter and stay for a year, and then we'll go someplace else. After two years, we said, why live here? And it's gotten better, not when you got to get out of traffic, but living in Dexter is a lovely place to be.
And for the fifty-six years we've lived here, I swear, they started talking about a fire station the first year we lived here.
It gets older and older.
Before we call it and everybody rushes out, take some pizza, please.
Thank you for all the work you've done.
I think the whole council, the time and sweat and tears, for something like this, when you know, you know the end result is for the good of everybody. But so many people want to stick their finger in the fire.
Well, thank you all for coming, I, I, looking online, Josh, it looks like there's like two people, the owl and Lucas, right?
It's, uh, Lucas and it's Quasimodo.
Okay, so, Lucas, do you want to say anything as part of the meeting? If still raising your hand, or, so. If that picture are okay online. Our last part of our agenda is to be back to non-range, does anybody want to say anything before we. That, seeing no hands, I thank you all for participating tonight, for coming tonight, for listening, for sharing your ideas and your passion. Use both your hands, just, if, if somebody, you talk to somebody. Don't be afraid to steer them towards somebody on council or staff, if they have a question, we want to help that answer the questions as best we can.
That commission chair tonight was very helpful, I feel like I see quite a state of information available, please start to think, come back to my eyes. Um, I think there's value in making some sort of additional, I hope to get good sort of information here this evening. This is really useful, I appreciate it for you.
Thank you, Todd. Travis, leave it there.